Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as amended on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and by posting a notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Mr. De George, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Peters. Mrs. De Sensa.
Present.
Mrs. Downing.
Mrs. Downing.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Polino.
Present, good evening.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Present, thank you.
We have a call.
Thank you. Now, we will go to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand virtually, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be limited to agenda items only. You will have more time during the regular portion of the board meeting if it's not agenda items. Comments shall be addressed to the Board President. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time and limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to make a comment will be recognized. At this time, if you'd like to make a comment on an agenda item, please raise your hand virtually.
Okay, so at this time, we're accepting public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to raise your hand virtually, you can use your Zoom app to do so, or you can, if you are calling in via phone, you can dial star nine to do that. Keep in mind, this is on agenda items only. All right, so right now, I could see we have Stephanie Fail, who we'll recognize. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Fail, and I am a teacher in the Lacey Township School District. Members of the Board, administrators, and community members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Stephanie Fail, and I'm a proud teacher in the Lacey Township School District. I've been in education for twenty-four years, eight of those have been here in Lacey. For those of you who know me, I'm a very laid-back person until I see something that I believe is wrong. Let me add here that tonight, I speak to you on behalf of only myself. There's been talk around our town, as well as our nation, regarding reopening schools. As you know, our district has employed hybrid and fully remote options for our students for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Now, the goal is to get students back in school five days a week. Here are my concerns. The CDC released new guidelines on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, regarding safely reopening schools. That report states, and I quote, "To enable schools to open safely and remain open, it's important to adopt and consistently implement actions to slow and spread, uh, slow the spread of SARS-CoV-2, both in schools and in the community." This means that all community members, students, families, teachers, and school staff should take actions to protect themselves and others where they live, work, learn, and play. In short, success in preventing the introduction and subsequent transmission of SARS-CoV-2 in schools is connected to and facilitated by preventing transmission in the broader community, end quote. I've heard many people restate what officials have said, that schools are a relatively safe place for our students, and the transmission rates in schools are low. Why is that? The reason that our transmission rates are low is that our schools follow the CDC guidelines to the letter. All students and staff wear masks. We stay six feet apart. We wash our hands frequently. We contact trays. We quarantine when needed, and our custodians work tirelessly to sanitize our buildings. I've also heard people quote the CDC after having stated that teachers do not need to be vaccinated in order to reopen schools. Let me address this statement. First, and again, I quote, "Success in preventing the introduction and subsequent transmission of SARS-CoV-2 in schools is connected to and facilitated by preventing transmission in the broader community," end quote. Currently, according to the Ocean County Department of Health, Lacey Township, this community, is the seventh highest-ranking town in the number of COVID-19 cases, seventh, only to Lakewood, Tom's River, Brick, Jackson, Berkeley, and Manchester. Ocean County is fifth highest ranking in the state of New Jersey in the number of COVID-19 cases, seventh highest rates in Ocean County, and Ocean County is the fifth highest rate in the state of New Jersey. We are up three point eight percent from last week. Also, a year ago, numbers like that made Ocean County a hotspot for COVID transmission. If community transmission is low, you could see how vaccinating teachers might not be a high priority, but that's not the case in Lacey. At the elementary level, students currently have snack time, and some students eat breakfast at school. Students remove their masks and eat their snacks or breakfast, then wash their hands and continue on with their studies. At a six-foot distance, this is still a risk, but five- and six-year-olds find it very difficult going long periods of time without eating. According to a nine-week fall study of eleven school districts in North Carolina, and I quote, "These schools implemented and strictly adhered to multiple mitigation strategies, including universal mask use and physical distancing. Breaches in mask use likely explain the new instances of in-school spread of SARS-CoV-2. COVID-19 transmission in schools is associated with community transmission. When community rates of COVID-19 are high, there's an increased likelihood that SARS-CoV-2 will be introduced to and potentially transmitted within the school setting," end quote. Imagine for a moment, March, two thousand twenty-one, those same five- and six-year-olds, now not able to socially distance themselves, masks off, eating their snacks or breakfast, next to another twenty students now back in their classrooms. Lacey Township, we can't fix this problem alone from within our schools. Our teachers, staff, administration, custodians, and nurses have all worked tirelessly to open our schools, to educate our kids, and to help our students socially and emotionally during this pandemic. Our schools are working, but our community is failing. Seventh highest rate of COVID cases in Ocean County, seven. We in this district are doing our part, wearing masks, socially distancing ourselves, sanitizing. We hear and see community members belittle us, stating that we don't want to work and that we want to get paid to do nothing. Personally, I resent those statements. I haven't seen my brothers in about a year. One lives in Delaware, the other lives in Maryland. Why? Because if I had visited them, I'd need to quarantine for fourteen days when I returned home, and I wanted to make...
I'm sorry, so sorry that the five-minute time limit is up, I'm so sorry to tell you. I also wanted to say that Dr. Clark, in a matter of around seven o'clock, is going to make a very comprehensive presentation about reopening plan, which will address most of all your questions.
Yeah, Mr. George, I just have another paragraph. Would you, would you mind if I, if I just finished, I'm sorry. Would you mind?
Okay by you? Okay, yes, ma'am, proceed.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you so much. Let's see. Our, our schools cannot reopen and stay open without the support of this community. It is up to you now. There are many people in the community who have been doing their part all along, and to those people, you have made it possible for your kids to be in school at all right now. You have struggled managing work, helping, helping your children with online learning, and juggling everything that has been thrown at you. But to those of you who have not done your part, it is time for you to step up. If you want your kids to be back in school five days a week, you need to slow and stop the spread in this community. By making the right decisions, you have the ability to change the course of this pandemic. Wear a mask correctly, socially distance yourself. Don't have people who don't live with you in your home. Don't get together with friends. Albert Einstein wrote, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results." This community cannot continue to have the seventh-highest COVID case number in Ocean County and expect that our schools will be able to safely reopen. I challenge you, all members of the Lacey Township community, to do the right thing, follow the guidelines. Our kids need you, and they need to be back in school. Stop the spread of this virus in town. Our schools, our teachers, our administrators are here. We are willing, the rest is in your hands now, residents of Lacey Township. Board of Education, I ask of you to support our community in this endeavor and continue to monitor the data provided by the Department of Health. When the community's spread has been significantly lowered, please, at that point, allow students back to full classrooms. There's an African proverb that reads, "It takes a village to raise a child," and I'll leave you with this. It'll take this village to reopen our schools. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time, Mr. George.
Very welcome, and it's a...
Thank you, Ms. Fail, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Merman.
Okay, I don't see anybody else with a hand raised. Actually, Michael Ryan just raised his hand, so we'll see him. And you can go ahead and state your name and begin your public comment.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Mike.
Those of the LTA, thank you, guys. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I'm speaking here tonight to publicly address the LTA's concerns for our student and staff safety with regards to the newly proposed mixing of the cohorts. The LTA is not against five-day-a-week live instruction. We want nothing more than, quote, "A return to normal" for our students, but only when it can be done safely, and frankly, we're just not there yet. It's almost six months to the day the LTA sat down with district administration and members of the Board to discuss what school would look like for the two thousand twenty-one academic year. At that time, a decision was made to begin the school year full remote for a period of two weeks until the much-needed PPEs for student and staff safety would arrive to allow us to open and start the school year as safely as possible. The decision was made to enter this year in a cohort-remote model. Cohorts of A and B groups and days were established as per one of the encouraged models from the guideline of the Road to Recovery Plan released by the state. Families of students who wished to remain in a full-remote model were also granted that opportunity. At that time, our region of the Central East was in a yellow zone, which meant we were at a moderate risk. The decreased amount of students and PPEs put into a place allowed us the ability to progress as the year moved forward. There have been ups and many downs. We've had outbreaks and positive cases of COVID-19, quarantines, and even had to pivot back to full-remote instruction at times. The current cohort-remote instructional model, while not ideal, has been effective. Instead of rolling this plan out now to mix the cohorts, we would advocate to delay this plan and reexamine it on a month-to-month basis. This is not the time to change what we are currently doing, especially when our region currently is in the orange, or the high-risk zone, and the county having the highest numbers of the variant strain in the entire state. I would encourage the Board to look at this plan later in the spring when staff and students and families have had more opportunities to get vaccinated, warmer weather conditions would allow more opportunities to have students outside, and windows to be open for more ventilation. Many parents that I've spoken to had no idea that this plan change would also result in schedule change for students. Elementary would be dismissed earlier to allow for grab-and-go lunch. The problem is that with that increased in-person student population, it doesn't allow for breakfast or lunch to be eaten in the school. That's a long time for elementary students to go without eating. Many families and educators at this point in the year have established norms and routines for education, and their childcare needs have been addressed. Changing this earlier dismissal time may put an increased financial burden on families paying for childcare. The schedule change will also affect our middle and high school students as well. Students those levels, once they've had a day of live-in-person instruction, will then be expected to go home and to log on to their classes for additional hour of remote instruction. It is my professional opinion, as a twenty-year educator, that this is not a practical expectation, or do I consider it to be effective for many of our students' needs at that level? I will close with this. The plan looking to be rolled out tonight negates the number-one factor of presenting, preventing the spread of COVID-19, and that's in its inability to maintain six feet or more of social distancing. If the district's plan has to work around guidelines and rely on the phrase "where applicable" in order to implement this plan, is it really a good or safe plan? Is the risk worth the reward? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Merman, is there any other comments at this time?
I guess we have Darlene Price. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Looks like she may have put her hand down this time. So we'll give it another couple of seconds here, if anybody else for agenda items only. Keep in mind, for public comment, and I do have Darlene is back, so we'll address her at this time. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Ah, okay, I see what the problem is with, with Ms. Price here. She is using an older version of Zoom, so we are unable to recognize you at this time, Ms. Price. You won't be able to talk on that. You may want to update your Zoom app for the next public comment session around seven o'clock. We do have one other, Caitlin DiMaggio. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, um, good evening. Um, I'm, I'm a parent of two children within the district, so this is where I'm speaking from, you know, my point of view. Um, as a parent of a second grader and a preschooler, and as someone who cares about the safety and health of all attending and working within Lacey School District, I am very concerned with the idea of Lacey Township School District going in person five days a week. It's incredibly irresponsible and dangerous for not only the students who attend the schools, but for the teachers, building staff, and administration within each school. These people are putting themselves at risk every day, as it is, to make sure the students are getting the best education and school experience that they can, that they can, under such unique circumstances. Custodial staff are doing their best to ensure the schools are properly sanitized with what little supplies that they are provided, so students can remain as healthy as possible, and school principals are trying to make the right calls and oversee everything in their buildings to make sure everyone in the school is safe. None of these, these groups of people have even been given the green light to be vaccinated, should they choose to. And the chance for them to, doesn't seem to be coming in the next few weeks or even month or so. Even if students don't get very ill or are not showing any signs of the virus, they can still pass it to someone who could pass it on to someone else who is at, at high risk of complications. You are playing with people's lives and the lack of empathy and blatant disregard for the issues that having in-person schooling five days a week can bring is despicable. It doesn't seem as though you care about the students or the people working in the schools, but only care about money and keeping up appearances for certain groups of people. I chose to have my children fully remote because we are a high-risk family. With one, with one of my children having a CHD. I want my, my children to be able to return to school, see their friends, get in-person learning experience just as much as anyone else. However, we will never get there in cases, if cases keep increasing among the schools because of your carelessness with the lives in the schools. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. DiMaggio. Mr. Merman.
Okay, I'm going to give Darlene Price another try here to see. And yes, it looks like she may have updated her Zoom app, so you may unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, darling.
Awesome, I'm on my personal device, I was on the school device before. My name is Darlene Price. I am a parent and a district of this, employee of this district. I also would like to express my thoughts on Dr. Clark's presentation this evening on mixing of the cohorts. From the initial outbreak of the COVID-19 pandemic, preventing the spread of COVID and limiting the number of people who contract the virus has been our primary concern as a community. To accomplish this, we have made many sacrifices in almost every aspect of our lives. As an educator, I believe providing a meaningful and comprehensive education to our students is of the utmost importance. However, in order to achieve this goal, we first need to focus on providing a healthy and safe environment. In the past, our district has taken actions to promote a safer learning environment, such as investing in the infrastructure to secure our buildings and update all of our infrastructure in the building, such as the heating and things like that, enrolling staff in specialized GNC training and adopting the Alice protocols. Earlier this year, our district worked tirelessly to adopt a hybrid model with cohorts and full-remote options to mitigate the spread of this deadly virus. This is why I am surprised to learn that the district's recent decision to abandon this model and combine the cohorts, because it is against the safety protocol established early on in this pandemic to keep our kids safe. According to the New Jersey Department of Health, our county is still in the orange, at high risk of community spread. As a direct result of combining our cohorts, we will see large class sizes, and that would make it impossible to maintain safe social distancing in our classrooms, our hallways, and the buses. Most of the classrooms can only contain about ten to twelve students at safe distances. By mixing these cohorts, we will lose this added protection. Staff and students will not be able to socially distant, and the risk of COVID transmission putting all of our students, our staff, and the families they go home to at greater risk of contracting the disease. In addition, this will force our schools to transition to full-remote and reduce the amount of in-person instruction our students currently receive. Exact, the exact opposite of what we're trying to achieve. On a final note, as a parent, I appreciated the opportunity to voice my concerns and questions on the recent survey about the reopening plan. We opted for the full-remote model for our son, and he has excelled in this platform. It is not without its challenges, though, as sitting in front of a computer for several hours can take its toll. However, the high school staff has done an outstanding job with the synchronized instruction and has maintained high standards and accountability. On the other hand, as a district employee, I am disappointed that the employees were not given the same survey to voice our concerns and questions prior to the Board of Ed making their decision to mix the cohorts. Your employees are the stakeholders that are directly involved in carrying out the plans developed by the Board of Ed, and I can't help but feel disappointed that our voices were not included in this discussion. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to my concern. As an LTS Day, LTSD alumni, a taxpayer, a parent, and employee of the district, please know that I am deeply committed to our excellence. I want us all to be safe, healthy, and successful in our endeavors, and continue to keep the safety in the forefront of all we do for our students. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for your patience with the technology.
Thank you, darling.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recognize Anne Marie Slater. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, guys, Anne Marie Slater from the woods in Bamber. Thanks for having the meeting tonight. Sorry it wasn't in person, but you know, I'm always happy to be here. Before I make my comment regarding the five-day in-person, with that, will there still be an opportunity for some people if they wanted to, to be remote, or is it going to be mandatory five-day?
Um, Ms. Slater, Dr. Clark is going to present the entire reopening plan, expansion plan, when we come back on. So after that, if you have questions that weren't answered, you can come back on public comment.
So I just want to say this. I am thrilled that you guys are considering going back to five days a week. Um, I know in my six, look, for my high school student, it doesn't really matter. And to Mr. Ryan saying, you know, they have to be online, I mean, in school, and then come home for an hour, too bad, you're in school, do what you're supposed to do. But for my sixth grader, in her cohort, it's her and one other student. That's it. She doesn't even want to go to school, it's one other person. She sits at her desk for five, she wants to go to school, but not for one other girl who she tries to be friends with, but, you know, they just don't mesh together, whatever. Not that they're not friendly, but I'm thrilled that it's going back to five days. In her other, the other half of her class, there's five people in that classroom. So to the teacher, I totally get that you might be nervous about, you know, an overcrowded classroom, but why not just give it a chance? These kids, my kid, is suffering emotional issues by not being at school. It's ridiculous, so this is my applause to all of you guys who are trying to do what is normal. Mr. Ryan, this is not an adjustment, this is not normal. You're saying that, oh, everybody's kind of getting into the groove of things. I don't want to get into the groove of things. This is not normal. We need to try to go back to normal as best we can. So thank you for the time, and I'll wait for Dr. Clark's presentation. And I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slater, thank you. Okay, Mr. Merman, seeing no other comments at this time, we're going to go on. Dr. Clark, do you have any comments right now, or would you like to hold off until the regular part of the meeting?
I'm gonna hold off.
Okay. Mrs. Claus, do you have anything right now?
Not right now.
Okay, Mrs. De Sensa.
I do, but I'm gonna let him go and then ask for the essence of time.
Mrs. Downing.
The same thing, due to time, I can wait.
Mr. Polino.
I too will wait, thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
I'll pass this time, thank you.
Okay, the only thing I have to say is Board members, on page ten of the agenda, number twelve, under the Extended School Year Program Administrator, we're going to pull that off the agenda till next month. Even though we're still having the Extended School Year Program, we would like to have not to exceed a amount, so we don't know how much we are going to pay out for that, so we're pulling it off the agenda until we get a exceeding amount. So please...
Mrs. McAvoy, just to a point of order, when we get to the agenda voting portion of the meeting, Mrs. McAvoy will reiterate her request, and out of a courtesy to her as a board member, we will not need to vote on removing that or tabling that item, but rather, as a courtesy, we'll table it until the next board meeting.
Can we make the motion now, Patrick, to table that item?
Well, you really don't need a motion, Mrs. De Sensa. It's, as we've done in the past, it's a, it's a courtesy to board members, unless there's some strong, I will ask if there are strong objections to it, which I don't see. Also, while we are, we're at it, I wanted to also point out that on Agenda Eight-seven, the amount has been changed from fifteen thousand seven hundred to six thousand forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. That change has been made on the online agenda, so I just wanted to point that out as well. That's all I have, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you, Mr. De George. At this time, we will go into private session. Mr. De George.
Yes, ma'am, be it resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload. Subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public, and the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be thirty minutes, after which the Board will reconvene and proceed with business. Action may be taken. May we have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
We don't need that, but, but that would be...
Nope, we don't need that, let's not do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're in private session.
Okay, we'll return as soon as private session is over. Okay, we'll return as soon as private session is over. We'd like to resume the regular meeting, February 18th, 2021. At this time, we will have the student representative comments. Who would like to go first?
So SGA does not have a report for the month of February.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other student representative comments tonight? Caroline, is the other girl coming on or no?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you in March. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to have the report of the superintendent. Dr. Clark?
Hey, thank you, Board President McAvoy. Welcome to the February Board Meeting. It is unfortunate that we are not meeting in person, even though we had every intention of meeting in person, but this time the weather didn't cooperate. And by now, you should have received an automated call about tomorrow's inclement weather. If not, letting you know tomorrow will be a virtual day, and we're hoping that this is the last of the snow. But we shall see. So we'll try and remain positive about that. And if not for the weather, and if we were in person, we were hoping that even though we've already presented our December and January seniors of the month virtually, we were hoping to be able to present them along with February's seniors of the month. But we're going to have to hold off for just one more month. So here's what we're going to do. We are going to present February seniors of the month virtually. And then Board President McAvoy and I talked about perhaps at a later date, scheduling a special board meeting that will be reserved just for student recognitions, seniors of the month. I know we have an Eagle Scout to recognize and a few other things. So we're gonna see how that goes, and we'll certainly advertise for that appropriately. So thank you for your patience. I know that it's, it's been a long school year so far, and yet it's still going very fast. And of course, I always want to thank our two student representatives, Caroline and Caitlin. I think what we're gonna do is save our unsung hero presentation for next month as well. Before I transition to seniors of the month and staff members of the month, I just want to remind our community of the superintendent's report that is filled with information about all of the accomplishments of our students, different programs that are going on throughout our schools. And I just sometimes think we don't draw enough attention to all of the great information that is in there. And the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is that we are using a new platform for our newsletters. And so each of our principals, along with our director of special services, has been putting together newsletters and sharing them, and I did one as well. So I encourage our school community to take a look at those. They look beautiful, and they're filled with amazing information. All right, so let's transition, Mr. Leidel, with first our February seniors of the month.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brandon, Principal of Lacy Township High School. We're here to celebrate the seniors of the month for February. First, I'd like to congratulate Kimberly Martinez Alvarez. At this time, we're gonna watch a video of all of her accomplishments here at Lacy Township High School.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Martinez, and I am proud to be February's senior of the month.
Kim, congratulations on student of the month. Very proud of you, and you definitely represent everything that's great about Lacy Township High School.
Some of my favorite classes here would have to be my STEM Core class, where we would do a lot of hands-on activities and learn about engineering and public speaking, as well as my human anatomy class, because since this class is so tiny, learning the subject was a lot more easier. And we played a lot of trivia games to learn, and overall, the environment was just very laid back, and we had a lot of fun.
I appreciate your honesty with me over the last couple of years. It has been extremely appreciated. You're one of the very few that we've had that is open, honest, hardworking, and dedicated to your overall success, and I appreciate it. So congratulations, Kim, on winning senior of the month.
In school, I'm the president of the Interact Club, as well as the captain for the color guard in the marching band. I am also part of the National Honor Society and the Heroes and Cool Kids Club. Outside of school, I volunteer for the Elks as a treasurer for the antlers, where we volunteer and help out veterans and those in need in our community.
Kim is not only smart and a hard worker, she actually has the biggest heart that I know. She's always shared that kindness with the class, which I always appreciated.
My favorite memory at LTHS definitely has to be the Interact picnic at the end of the year. We would all go to Gilly and play volleyball, and we would also do fun activities with all the Rotarians.
Over the past four years, your hard work, dedication to your overall educational success has truly paid off. You know, having you as a student in my class, it has been an absolute pleasure.
After high school, I planned to attend a university to study biomedical engineering and become a prosthetist.
Congratulations again on student of the month, and everybody in this room knows you're gonna have a huge impact on the rest of the world.
Kimberly, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we want to congratulate you for being February's senior of the month. There's so many things you're involved with at the high school, Interact, Rotary, Student Government, and being president of Heroes and Cool Kids is very impressive. We know you'll be very successful in college, and again, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to congratulate you on this achievement.
We're back celebrating the seniors of the month for February. I would now like to congratulate Michael McMurray. We're now gonna watch a video of his accomplishments as well.
Michael, congratulations on your selection as senior of the month for February 2021. I'm so unbelievably proud of you, and you've been such an awesome student since day one, walking into my class in digital media productions and WLTS. And you've been an unbelievable help with the work that we've done, especially over the last year and a half.
My favorite classes from high school are Mr. Merman's Digital Media Productions class, which I've imparted for four years, Mrs. Terrell's Engineering Science class, which I only got to take two years of, and my five years of Mr. Greland in German.
Congratulations, Michael, winning senior of the month. It is extremely well deserved. Although your reserved personality might not exactly show it, but I know for a fact that you're actually really happy. When you came into my class only two short years ago, I wasn't really sure the kind of student you were actually gonna be. You were actually quiet, but you were always able to perform. That is one thing that I really envy in you. You have the ability to be able to see the end goal and the physical ability, mechanical ability, to be able to see it through.
Throughout high school, I was involved on the hockey team and filming pretty much every sport with Mr. Merman after school with WLTS.
Mac has just always been really encouraging in class, particularly to me. You know, sometimes students can be encouraging to one another, a teacher can be encouraging to a student, but Mac always encouraged me. Sometimes I get really stressed out about X, Y, or Z, but his whole attitude of just being relaxed and nonchalant, water off a duck's back, it sometimes would run off on me, rub off on me, and I really appreciated that about him.
Mac has this deadpan personality. That's really the best way I can describe it. In the world of video production, things can be falling apart around us. We could be setting up for a football game, a basketball game, a Board of Ed meeting, any number of different things that we do here at WLTS, and things just aren't going right. It's technical difficulties, whatever else you want to call it. I might be going crazy, and Mac will walk in, and let's go. And somehow take that step back and help to figure it out. And that really is one of the best personality traits I can, I can say about Mac is that he really just doesn't seem to panic. I think underneath it all, he's kind of getting a little panicky and whatever else, at least I like to think he is, right? But he just outwardly just kind of figures it out, and that's really a kind of cool trait with Mac McMurray.
My favorite memory from LTHS is during last year's hockey season, we got to see my manager, Eric, play on the ice with us for the first time.
Through the many overall conversations we've had over the past two years about your future endeavors, I know you're gonna be successful. You're a person who truly figures it out.
After high school, I planned on attending Montana State University to study film.
You've been accepted to Montana State, so we're really looking forward to see what you do there. And it feels like you walked into my class five minutes ago, and here we are in your senior year. You're senior of the month, and I really could not be prouder of you.
Michael, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we want to congratulate you for being February's senior of the month. Your resume was very impressive. You're the station manager for WLTS, which is exciting. We know you do a wonderful job with them and Mr. Merman. And whatever career path you choose, we know you'll do a wonderful job and be very successful. Again, congratulations.
Fantastic. Congratulations to Michael, AKA Mac, and Kimberly. Those were excellent presentations. And thank you, Board President McAvoy, for doing these recordings in the absence of having our students in person. But we're gonna get them in soon, when snow stops. All right, let's transition to our staff members of the month. So again, we had to do this virtually, but we do have a video, so let's roll that, Mr. Leidel.
Hello again. We are back to introduce our February staff members of the month. It's hard to believe that we're in February, even though we're having some crazy weather. Our school year is moving along, and we are about to surprise our two staff members. I'm really excited about this month's selections, and I'm gonna hand it over to the principals.
Hi, everybody. Today's a very exciting day at Mill Pond. We have one of our very own teachers here. Her name's Mrs. McCann, and she has been selected as the staff member of the month. She doesn't know yet, so we're gonna surprise her.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I love. How are you?
Good, good. Hi.
So you're probably wondering why there's a video camera here.
Yes.
So you were selected as staff member of the month for the Lacy Township School District.
Oh, my God. Thank you so much. I got it in shock. Oh, my goodness. It makes it easy when you love it, you do, and you have an amazing team. Thank you.
So we're so proud of you. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Hi. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, so much.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Reneska, and we're at Cedar Creek Elementary School. We're just about to surprise our staff member of the month, Patty Barle. Patty is a power professional here in Cedar Creek. She's wonderful with the kids. She loves everybody. You give her a job, she gives a hundred percent. She represents our education association. She, she's just wonderful. I don't know what else to say. She's great. Very deserving, so let's go and surprise her. Mrs. Barle.
Hi.
Hi. You, boys and girls, Mrs. Barle has been nominated and has won staff member of the month at Cedar Creek. Yeah, so Mrs. Barle, you are going to be presented with a plaque at the board meeting. If you can make it, if you can't, then.
Oh, it's virtual, isn't it?
It's virtual.
Yes, I'm sorry. No.
Okay, so you're virtually gonna be recognized as staff member of the month for Cedar Creek. Wait, wait, we do, there it comes.
Congratulations, Patty and Allison. Very well-deserved recognition, and we will see you next month for our March staff members of the month. So even though we have to be virtual, I think our principals had a little fun with that. So we will hope to have our February staff members of the month, too, perhaps when we do our student presentations in person. So congratulations to Mrs. Barle and Mrs. McCann. We do have some plaques for you, and we will make sure that you get those plaques so you can hang them proudly in your classrooms. Okay, so I am now going to transition to our school reopening expansion plan presentation. Since we opened school last September, we have been meeting regularly to discuss Phase Two and Phase Three of our expansion plans with the goal of returning our students back to the classroom five days a week. So Phase One is where we are right now. I know we are not alone in this endeavor, as many students in districts surrounding us are either already attending school five days a week or expanding in the next few weeks to come. Let me also add that we are very, very much aware, obviously based on the comments then that have already been made, but we are very much aware of the concerns, the questions, the fears, and the apprehensions surrounding this expansion. But as we have up until this point, we will consider, continue to monitor all of the information that is available to us so that we can continue to make informed decisions. So in presenting tonight's presentation, district supervisors, Mr. Zalinski and Mrs. Amos, along with our assistant superintendent, Mr. Deck, Mr. Decker, are going to co-present a few slides that we've prepared for our school community. So, Mr. Leidel, thank you for putting that presentation up for us. So as you can see, I mentioned Phase Two and Phase Three of our school reopening expansion, and that is advancing to five-day instruction. And again, Phase One being where we are right now. So, Mr. Leidel, the next slide. As I've already stated, and it's definitely important to state it again, is our commitment to health and safety, and that is to create a plan that is safe, to create a plan that meets the mandates of the New Jersey restart and recovery requirements, to create a plan that is responsive to our community's needs, and finally, to create a plan that is feasible within the constraints of our facilities, our space, and our resources. Next slide, Mr. Leidel. So this is where Mr. Zalinski and Mrs. Amos and Mr. Decker are going to jump in. It's important for our school community to get an understanding of where we are now with our state conditions. And Mr. Zalinski is gonna talk a little bit about these three charts, which, by the way, is the information that has been our guide since schools opened in September. So go ahead, Mr. Zalinski.
So when we look at these maps, it's very telling. The state decided at the beginning of this reopening back in September, they were gonna regionalize the different counties into different categories. And the reason that they did that is because they recognized that some of the counties had hotspots that would continue to hurt them as far as their numbers. We do have one in Ocean County. I won't name the town. So what they did is they regionalized us with Middlesex County, Union County, and Monmouth County. What, and this is a good, these are good slides, because it does show, if you go left to right, it's showing that we are slowly, and of course, this could change at a moment's notice, we're slowly exiting the orange, which is considered high activity levels for COVID-19, and into the moderate levels, which is yellow in the state of New Jersey. You know, the, the patch, Lacy Patch, has gotten a lot of traction because they keep saying that Ocean County is in the red, or our district, our four-county district is in the red. That's only partially true. And if you dig a little deeper and you have to really Google the COVID-19 activity level report to find this report in the state of New Jersey, we are writ for case rate, but we have transitioned into a moderate level for two other categories. So they keep getting a lot of traction that were red. We're actually never have been red, which means when you look at from green to yellow to orange to red, schools can remain open. If we turned into red, that's where you would have a county-wide shutdown of schools, and luckily, we've never gone that way. And we have transitioned in the, in a better direction since, actually, probably about since December. We've gotten better in the state of New Jersey and in Ocean County, and in particular, the districts, the other counties that we are in combination with. Mr. Leidel, if you go to the next slide, we've highlighted those numbers. You know, you're looking for a downward trend, and you can see Central East, that's our district. And we have been in the downward trend ever since about December. We're not gonna bore you with the other ones, but these are the last two, hot off the press today, because they release them every Thursday. It shows you the COVID-19 activity level. So, you know, not to pick on the patch, I'm not trying to, but they, they keep talking about that red. It's only part of the story. If we were in fact red in multiple categories, we would have to transition or pivot to all remote instruction. That luckily has not been the case. And part of this reopening, from my perspective, where I handle a lot of the COVID issues in the district, the reopening is, is, is a the reopening is allowed because we are in a downward trend. We are not in an upward trend. You know, we would be not proceeding if the state and the county was getting worse. In fact, they're getting better, you know? And people can manipulate and look at numbers, you know? But overall, countywide and regionally, we are getting better.
And then I just want to piggyback. Thank you, Mr. Lidle. I just want to stay on that slide for a moment. Go back one. Thank you. Mr. Zalinski mentioned that this Activity Level Report does come out every Thursday and the link to this report is on our website. In addition to information that's on our website are the COVID numbers in our district. And that's, we provide information that relates to our enrollment for both students and staff and we've included that enrollment by hybrid group and by staff enrollment as well. And it gives the community a sense of, you know, what do those percentages actually mean for our district? So I encourage you to visit both this information and that chart that I just referenced. Okay, next slide, Mr. Lidle. So again, if we're going to continue talking about health and safety remaining our top priority, I grabbed this quote from the 119-page document that our school reopening plan is based on and that's the New Jersey Department of Education Road Back Document. And the quote there is important to the rest of our discussion in which it says socially distanced, that it is expected that we socially distance classrooms to the maximum extent possible. And certainly, again, reiterating what Mr. Zalinski said, if we were in the red truly or we were trending back toward orange, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But we are trending in the direction that we were hoping to see by this time. So with regard to that statement there, if we're going to expand on it further, it says where such physical distancing is not feasible or difficult to maintain, protective measures such as physical barriers between students and arranging seating such that all individuals face the same direction can help reduce transmission. And these are all mitigating steps that we have taken and that we will continue to take. With all of that said, it is important to note that we're going to continue following the guidance provided by the New Jersey Department of Health to include more mitigating steps as necessary and appropriate. So for example, just like what recently happened at the high school where we had to investigate some infections and trace them back to their source through contact tracing, we had to hit the pause button for in-person instruction at the high school. So what we mean by implementing mitigating steps as necessary is that when we do expand, if we have to individually quarantine, we will do that. If we have to quarantine an entire class, we will do that. If we have to shut down a whole school, we will do that. And if we find that our infection rates, per the recommendation of the Ocean County Health Department, are on the rise or if our region goes back into the orange, then we will return to the A/B hybrid cohort model of instruction with the other piece of that being full remote. So it's just really important for our community to understand that we are just not throwing caution to the wind and saying, this is what we're doing no matter what and everything we had been doing is off the table. That is just not true.
So, Dr. Clark, let me, this is where I live most of my day, in your blue area down in your slide. For the public and maybe for people who aren't dealing with it on a daily basis, you know, the movement that we're going to make will not change our rules and/or our protocols. I'm confident from my seat that we can implement these rules even bringing students back to the buildings in greater numbers. A couple of misnomers and a couple of times it's been mentioned in several meetings we've had and I believe this evening as well. The misnomer is that we're going to abandon the cohort model of instruction. That's not true. The A/B will change into a one-cohort model. So students who are returning to their classrooms K to six, they will still operate within their singular cohorts. The numbers will be a little bit higher of that cohort, which will, the four things that you have listed there, which will make a little bit more challenging are quarantines, whether it's individual, entire class, or individual school closure. But we do all of those things now, especially in the younger grades. We've done it ever since we began this in September. When you have the younger students pre-K, K, and Grade One, it's not about individual quarantines, it's about entire class quarantines because of the nature of a K or a 1. And the teachers get quarantined as well, whether they are six foot, over six foot, under six foot, because of the nature of those classrooms. So these procedures we put in place, we're confident that we've done these procedures enough times that we can keep them going even though the numbers may come up. So it's still a cohort model of instruction. It's just not A/B. It'll be their cohort and if the K to six, it's their homeroom teacher and possibly in the Mill Pond School, I know they switch teachers during the course of the school day. It's still a cohort model. Middle school and high school, it doesn't feel like a cohort model, but it is. It just happens to be their cohort is the four classes that they take during the school day. So they're not mixing it up in the gyms, they're not mixing it up necessarily in the hallways, they're not mixing it up in the lunchrooms. And I know you're going to get to a little more of the discussion there as we move on. But that's an important piece of the puzzle there. As far as the closures that we've experienced, both of them were out of an abundance of caution, not because we felt that we had large levels of in-school infections. We want to make sure that we're aggressively contact tracing in both cases. And as a matter of fact, the closure that everybody experienced in January, immediately after we came back to school, the state actually changed the rules. And if they had changed the rules prior to that closure, we would not have had to close. So, you know, we did that again, out of an abundance of caution. We're happy we did so, you know, to keep everybody safe. And then the current high school closure is very similar, not a change of rule, but through aggressive contact tracing, we have discovered that we, by rule, we didn't have to close, but we did. And I'm saying that because I want the public to, and I guess, and definitely our teachers to understand, that the rules don't change. It just, it may become a little more difficult, it may become a little tighter in the classroom, certainly. And we feel that and see that, but, you know, it doesn't change what we do. You know, and again, all those things would be on the table if you have them listed there, individual quarantines, entire class, and individual school closures, which we have right now for the high school, will still remain in place and we aggressively pursue those things every day. It's not, we don't sit down one day and go, you know, and sigh and say we're okay. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, that we're still operating on a cohort model because that's part of the rules and part of what we have to do. And we cohort kids, we make sure we know where they are. And again, even beyond that, we know where they're seated so that when we do a contact trace through our buses, which we do now, whether we contact trace through our classrooms, which we do now, you know, those things do not change.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zalinski. So, all right, next slide, Mr. Lidle, because now we're going to start to talk about what the actual plan is. So again, I know I've mentioned this numerous times, but it's worth mentioning again, we are in Phase One. So Phase Two is the return of the high school and the middle school five days a week, beginning on Monday, March 8th. So when that happens, students are going to continue to follow the same hourly schedule as we have under the A/B hybrid model. And that's going to make a little more sense when I talk about the elementary transition. Lunch is still going to be offered as a grab and go. So the middle school and high school have been implementing that since September and social distancing requirements will be maintained to the greatest extent practicable. All right, next slide, Mr. Lidle. For the elementaries, that transition, which is Phase Three for all students attending five days a week, that's going to begin on Monday, March 22nd for Mill Pond, Cedar Creek, Lenoka Harbor, and Forked River. So as Mr. Zalinski said, it's important to note there that the students are going to remain in their assigned cohorts for the entire school day, thus limiting interaction between different groups of students, something that we've been doing all along. In order to make this transition work, though, for the entire district, K through 12, the entire district, including the high school and the middle school, will pivot to a four-hour school day mirroring what we used to call the early dismissal schedule prior to the pandemic. And so I'm sure right away, a lot of you are saying, you know, wow, four-hour day, we're going to decrease instruction even more. And that's not the case because if we do the math, we know that we're actually increasing that to five more hours of instruction if students are attending five days a week. The change that's primarily going to happen at the elementaries is going to be with regard to lunch. That's going to be offered as grab and go in all buildings. But, and I know I'm going to mention this later on in a slide, but I'm going to say it here and then I'll say it again. Let's use a Monday, for example. So at the end of the day, students are going to grab their lunch on their way out for that day. But in that bag is going to be the breakfast, their breakfast for the next day. Tuesday, they're going to grab their lunch for Tuesday, their breakfast for Wednesday, Wednesday lunch, Thursday breakfast, and so on. And again, I'll reiterate that again. And then just like with the high school, social distancing requirements are going to be maintained to the greatest extent practicable. Next slide, Mr. Lidle. So the four-hour early dismissal schedule, that's going to begin on March 22nd. And again, not on March 8th for middle school and high school. So on Monday, March 8th through the 22nd, the schedule, the dismissal schedule that's currently in place will stay in place, but will change for middle school and high school on the 22nd. And this is the schedule, we will post this to our website once we make these transitions. And I'm going to, again, talk about that a little bit more. Okay, next slide, Mr. Lidle. So the big question here is why are we beginning with the middle school and high school? And as I mentioned earlier, we are not alone in this endeavor in these expansion plans, but districts are handling it differently. Some districts, elementary students are coming back first and in other districts, middle school and high school are coming back first. For us, the reason why we're starting with the middle school and the high school is because the current student population of the in-person students at the high school is on the lower side and it allows us to quickly transition to a five-day instruction without altering current schedules and procedures. So that's strictly based on enrollment. And we have been delivering instruction synchronously, meaning that the teacher is teaching behind their camera and students that are sitting in front of them are learning at the same time that students are home learning. And that's going to continue. With regard to lunch, the high school, middle school, again, already doing grab and go. So that's going to continue. Social distancing requirements are going to be easier to maintain at the middle school and high school and that's a fact and a fact that we recognize. But then the question becomes, what are we going to do about the fact that we're reducing the middle school and high school hours from five hours to four hours? And I addressed that in the last bullet there. We are going to be conducting regularly scheduled Google meets that are going to supplement instruction that happens during the day beyond the school day. I'm not going to get into that too much because we are going to be communicating with our middle school and high school families about what that means. And so for the sake of continuing to talk about our expansion plan, I will save that for Mr. King and Mr. Brewer and Mr. Zalinski to flesh out what that means exactly for our students. Okay, Mr. Lidle, next slide. Mr. Zalinski, did you want to add anything there?
I just want to add to, you know, that all of the buildings are unique and are going to be different. And I know this very intimately now because every time we do contact tracing through our buildings, which will never go, will not go away in the near term, all the buildings have their different needs. And the middle school and the high school, from my seat, you know, we are going to watch very closely, you know, the interactions and how the kids move around the hallways and we'll see how we do, you know, as far as if we have any in-school transmissions. And that's really what we watch for. It's in-school transmission is what the, we don't want to happen. Not to bore you with it, but we did, we had no in-school transmissions. We've had a couple since Christmas, the holiday break. You know, we believe that there was a lot of interactions over the holiday break on the outside of school. And just, and it'll come up a couple of times too. We haven't really mentioned it and I know the parents early on that fully remote is still an option, but we're moving in this direction, especially, you know, in all of our buildings because there are students out there that have never had the experience of their building. So freshmen have never had an experience of being a freshman. Seventh graders have never had a middle school experience. Fifth graders never had their Mill Pond experience. And, you know, believing that we can move in this direction and still do our proper diligence and our proper work in our buildings, you know, we wanted to tier it. We wanted to do the middle school and the high school. And again, like you said, some districts flipped it. It was just more expedient for us to do it this way. And we're going to watch very closely. And you even mentioned that, that we can return to a different level or a different place if it's not working. And I think the high school experienced that the best where we made our call very late on Monday to close for Tuesday and the rest of the week. We're able to operate very nimbly and very quickly, you know, because we're a K to 12 and we only operate with our Lacy students, we're able to do that.
Great, thank you. All right, so let's talk a little bit about our elementary return. So as we've mentioned, excuse me, Group A and Group B students will begin in-person learning for five days a week, starting on March 22nd. And as I've already talked about, our school times will be shortened to follow the four-hour early dismissal schedule. The lunch will transition to grab and go again at the end of the day and will include the next day's breakfast. And then finally, I've provided some photos there. These are actual photos of our classrooms. And the photo there on top is a photo of the actual desk shield that is clear on all three sides. And then the photo down below is a classroom that's already set up with those. We already have those desk shields in district. There is one for every student and that will be in addition, obviously, to the students wearing a mask. Okay, next slide, Mr. Lidle. So I anticipate that one of the questions that's going to come up is why can't we have full days for in-person instruction? And I'm going to say that that's going to be Phase Four. When that will happen, we don't know yet. But the reason why we can't do it right now is for lunch. If we offer a full day of school, we are required by the state to offer in-school lunch. And we know that under the state's current executive orders, schools are limited as to whether or not they can use their cafeteria because of the space and taking down the masks to eat and so forth. And then the second reason is busing due to the schedule required to make our multi-tiered busing system work. And Mr. Hannon does a fantastic job with this. All of our schools need to operate on the same number of hours. And that is an area that we explored. Could we play around with the school hours to see if we could extend the four-hour day to perhaps a five-hour day or a five-and-a-half-hour day? And our schedules are so tight with regard to busing that it was a real challenge. And so unfortunately, the answer is no there. And again, we will be posting the early dismissal schedule on our website once we make the transitions.
Right. And Dr. Clark, it's worth noting that we currently contact trace our buses now because there are situations where it is the maximum that's impracticable. Some of our buses, the students do not sit six feet apart because transportation is such an issue. So we are familiar with contact tracing our buses now, so it's not something new to us, is my point.
Correct. And I know that that's a question that has come up in questions that were submitted. Yeah. And the answer to that is yeah, there are going to be more students on our buses. However, we are going to take mitigating steps to ensure that we're going to try and keep one student to a seat or siblings on a seat together. And, you know, we have yet to see how many students are going to be returning and I'm going to talk about that at the end of the presentation. But skipping seats where we can and of course, continue to wear our masks, obviously. Okay, next slide, Mr. Lidle. So how do we make this transition successful? I mean, obviously, we're going to continue to follow all health and safety guidelines, including wearing a mask at school and using the physical barriers. We touched upon already the fact that if we have to pull back and revert back to the hybrid A/B model, we will do that. Or if we have to close a school for a short Or if we have to close a school for a short period, or close the whole district for a short period, we will do that. We're going to keep advising our staff members and our teachers to stay home if anyone is sick with COVID-like symptoms. And then finally, to continue to communicate with our school nurses immediately if it has to do with isolating or quarantining due to COVID-19.
Yes, and I'd like to jump in here, just from my seat. The trend that we're seeing is that people in a household are getting a COVID test and sending their students to school. We implore our parents not to do that. Anyone in your household who gets a COVID test, everybody should stay home until there's a result of that test, even if it's just an abundance of caution tests.
Great. Definitely worth noting. Thank you.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Lidle, next slide. All right, so again, by way of summary, in terms of a timeline for our implementation, Monday, March 8th is going to be the transition for our middle school and high school, and Monday, March 22nd, the transition for all elementary schools. Again, I cannot say this loud enough or enough times. The start dates are absolutely going to be dependent on the continued monitoring of COVID cases in the district and any updated health guidelines. We are going to continue to watch those activity level reports. This timeline that we've presented tonight is going to provide time for our schools, for transportation, and for food services to prepare for changes. What's going to happen next is we are going to be sending our parents yet another survey so that families can select the five day in-person instruction model or full remote. And we're going to be providing timelines. We're going to be doing that by school so that the principals can get an accurate count and can begin planning for the return of our students. And then that third bullet is just a reiteration of what I said in the fourth bullet. And then the last slide is what we've been saying all along. We appreciate the continued support of our families of the, of course, the Ocean County Health Department has been amazing. Our nurses have been amazing. Our students have been amazing, resilient, patient. And we are in this together. We have been from day one, and we have to continue going in that direction. So this presentation is going to be posted on our website so that our parents can review them. But again, we are going to be sending out a communication early next week, followed by those surveys. Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. I appreciate you co-presenting. All right. That concludes my comments for tonight for President McAvoy. Again, this presentation will be on our website tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. At this time, we will have public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state your name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Merman, please.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. At this time, if you would like to make a public comment, you may use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app, or if you're calling in by phone, you can dial star nine. You'll be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn. So at this time, we'll recognize Alyssa Spakowsky, and you may unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hello, Alyssa Spakowsky from Lenoka Harbor. I'm the Secretary of CPEG. That's the Parent Advisory for Special Education. It's almost time for many special ed parents to have IEP meetings. I've recently had one for my son who's in the middle school. Our case manager, Kelly Marchatello, was fantastic to work with. My son's new IEP looks great. Case managers here in Lacey have to work very hard because they carry so many cases, and I want to thank them all. There are so much that goes into an IEP and carrying out complicated schedules. And every case is unique. So if any parents that have IEP questions, please reach out to CPEG. Also, one of our members ran a fundraiser, and we want to thank everyone who supported us. And a very special thank you to Mrs. McAvoy for her support and her donation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Spakowsky. Mr. Merman?
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Gabriella Flanagan. If you could, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi, this is Gigi Flanagan. 1301 Exeter Place, Lenoka Harbor, New Jersey. I just wanted to really thank, especially Dr. Clark, for all of the hard work you put into getting our kids back into school, first for the hybrid and now heading into full-time. It's so important. I have two children in middle school, seventh and eighth graders, and they have to get back to school. And thank you for finding a way. I know some people still think it's a little bit dangerous. I think it's necessary, and I really think that it is so important that you're putting in all these measures to keep the kids safe. And thank you to the board for recognizing the importance of the children being back in school full-time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Flanagan.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Anne Marie Leiter. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hi again, Anne Marie Leiter, 121 Carriage Way. Yeah, you guys know I'm excited about school starting up again, and I appreciate, too, the hard work and the planning. I know this isn't easy. I have, you know, questions, and I know it's not time for questions, so you can make them a statement or a question or whatever, something to consider. I know there's a lot going on. I'm concerned first with the High School Spring Musical, the play. My daughter is involved in it. They're having to wear masks and social distance while performing. And I find that kind of weird, or I don't know, I don't understand that when athletes are able, basketball, for example, I mean, these kids are on top of each other grunting and whatever, yet the lesbians are having to wear masks, and I don't understand why. I attended the PABA meeting, and something, I don't remember the band director's name, and for whatever reason, I can't, and I'm sorry if you're listening, but he said it was about, like, you know, breathing and singing, or, you know, that doesn't really fly with me. So I don't know what's going on with that. But also regarding the play, if you guys might consider allowing maybe two or three or four tickets per cast and crew member. That auditorium is giant, and there might be 30 kids involved. And even if it's only two, you know, spectators or people attending, just to let them have that experience of a live performance. I know I would appreciate it. I'd also like to bring up the prom for the seniors. I know other districts have already booked outdoor venues. I don't know what our district is doing, but, you know, you can use my yard. I have a nice wraparound driveway. We can set up some some valet parking or something. I don't know. It would be great to give these kids a prom. And I understand not inside, but, you know, something. I got a $500 dress in my closet for my daughter from last year. I'll alter it again if that needs me. The other question or comment, whatever, is for my elementary school daughter, I understand, you know, no parties in the classroom, obviously, for obvious reasons, but kind of like with the grab and go lunch, why can't there be grab and go something for these kids, like for Valentine's Day? I mean, is the cootie still on products? I don't know. Like, if they were to bring in a valentine, a card, maybe no food, a handwritten card, just some way for the classes to acknowledge each other, they're friends. Just something to think about moving forward. And then lastly, I wanted to know if it was on the table at all for recreation activities to resume. Specifically, at this time of year, basketball, the rec basketball leagues. I know they practice in the school gyms. I don't know if that's even on your table, and I can understand if it's not. There's a lot going on. But I know that my daughter misses it and could use the exercise. And that's about it for tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Leiter. And Mrs. Leiter, I'm going to ask Dr. Clark to please answer your questions, and I know the board would love to come to a musical and see the students at a prom, but I'm not sure of your answers. So, Dr. Clark, could you please answer what you can of Mrs. Leiter's questions?
Sure. So I'm going to probably not get to all of them, but I'm going to work backwards. With regard to the recreation, I have had several community members reach out, asking if they could once again begin using our facilities. And we had a discussion a while back that while the executive order is still in place, and our students aren't permitted to come back to school full-time, that our facilities would be off limits to outsiders. We're going to maintain that position, because again, we are just starting to roll out this expansion plan, and we certainly don't want to introduce a practice that's unnecessary at the time. I know how much our recreation groups want to use our schools, but, you know, we have to think of our students, and we have to think of our teachers and our administrators, and, you know, we are first the school district and then a community where we're allowing outsiders in. So we're going to revisit it, just not right now. And then as far as, you know, the prom, I know Mr. Brandis and his administrative team, they're hard at work, already thinking about prom and graduation, because I, for one, do not want to see our students graduate in 90-degree weather in July. But a lot of that, of course, is going to be dependent on any changes that the governor makes to his executive orders with regard to spectators. And a recent change just happened, but with regard to spectators and people attending those types of events. So there's certainly more information forthcoming. And then as far as the Spring Musical, you know, I'm going to say this. The athletics or the athletes, they're working in cohorts, too. And so, you know, we've had instances where the entire basketball team had to quarantine, and that is because through contact tracing, we've kept, I mean, through contact tracing, we've traced it back to a source, and because they're all together, that's why an entire team has to be quarantined. We're trying to avoid that for the musical, because, you know, we don't want to wipe out the entire cast and crew and then not have a spring musical. So I know that Mr. Ollender and Mr. Montague are taking these extra precautions and having the students form masks and socially distance. And then I think the last thing was about the tickets for the Spring Musical. So, you know, when we get there, we'll consider it, but I anticipate that we're going to be in a different place when we get to the Spring Musical, and we'll have to answer that question when we get there. I think I covered all of them.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, and thank you for your comments, Mrs. Leiter.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Jaclyn W. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Jaclyn, you're muted. If you could please unmute. Okay, we cannot hear you, Jaclyn. You're muted.
I'm sorry, is it working? I'm sorry.
Yes, now we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, sorry. Jaclyn Hardy from Lenoka Harbor. We just had a few questions. My daughter, Zoe Hardy, had a question for Dr. Clark, if that's possible.
But is the question, please?
Good evening, Dr. Clark and members of the board. My name is Zoe Hardy. I'm a fourth grader student at Lenoka Harbor School. I'm currently a full remote student. I cannot attend school at this time because I have a heart condition that I was born with. Today, I am representing all full remote students. It's not easy being a full remote student. As of right now, my schedule is working for me. My fear for when students go back five days and cohorts no longer exist, what will happen to my AM and PM meetings? How will my educational needs be met?
Okay, Jaclyn, thank you. Yes, Dr. Clark, could you please answer Zoe?
Sure. So Zoe, first, let me thank you for asking the question, because that's very brave of a fourth grader to get get here at a board meeting and ask questions. So Zoe, I completely understand your question, and we certainly are going to make sure that we take steps to make sure that your instruction is not interrupted. We're going to probably have to make some slight changes to your schedule to accommodate students attending five days a week, but I can certainly tell you that the education that you're currently receiving and the level of the education that you're receiving will not change.
Okay. And Zoe, please come back to another board meeting and let us know how your education's going, once they come back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Jessica Duffy. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment. Okay, so unfortunately, Jessica is using an older version of Zoom. Jessica, if you would like to comment, you'll have to go and upgrade that version of Zoom to do that, because I cannot promote you to talk at this time. And I do not see any more hands up, so if there is anyone who would like to make a public comment, please make sure to raise your hand, and we have Darlene Price. You may unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Hello again, Darlene Price. I'm so proud of Zoe. She has me in tears. She's a student at Lenoka Harbor, where I'm working. And I agree with her. My son is also on full remote. And I have to say, the consistency of that particular model for him, and he is home for reasons similar to Zoe. And we're trying all we can to keep our family safe. I'm considered the weak link, because I'm the only one that leaves my house to, you know, go to work and come home. So I'm so proud of you, Zoe. If you're still on, you make my heart so proud. That's what we're here for, and we're so proud of you. But that's what brings up my concern about moving to this five day, because I want consistency for all of our students. And this cohort model, I know it's not perfect, but it has our safety of our students in. I think it's a great plan. We've been able to operate without closing down because of, for example, on a Thursday, which is an A day, a student tests positive, we don't find about it, they don't come back until the following weekend. We have those three days to help mitigate, so it doesn't pass the spread on to our other students. With the mixing in elementary school, a classroom teacher's class list has A students and B students, so they're already grouped together as a homeroom. So with the model, I'm so fearful that when all of the students do come back, instead of having the six students in a room, it'll now grow to 25 students in a room, or 20. And we don't have that social distancing, which I feel so strongly that has protected us. Not to mention that when the students do come, they're getting more individualized attention. The teachers are on top of it. They already know where the students are. They already know where the students are struggling. They can get to all of the the students and give them more individualized with a smaller group. Um, so my my fear, like I stated earlier, is that with this particular model that you've proposed, we have all of the students together. We don't have our social distancing, the barriers are great, but the students aren't flat. When they their chairs are out, they're not physically behind the barrier anymore. The only time the students go behind that barrier is when they lean in to do any kind of seat work. So when a student sits up straight, the barrier is not fully protecting them. They do have masks, the masks don't fit. Some of our students, um the masks fall below their nose. They're little, they're babies, they um it's difficult to sit all day with the mask. I'm asthmatic. I it's difficult for me to sit with a mask on all day and try to project the voice through the mask and through those shields so that they can hear when they're at their seats. But um I'm just afraid that being in the orange that we are now, if we still are in the orange come March twenty-second with the large group and not having the social distancing that I feel has protected us this far will put us back into remote or change the schedule, disrupt the schedule, and the students making us go back to the AB back and forth. And um it's just not consistent like it is for the remote students where they have their schedule in place, and it takes a long time to develop that routine. And we only have four months of school left. Thank you for listening to me again. I appreciate it. You know how passionate I am. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. Mr. Merman, are there any other comments?
I guess Mrs. McAvoy, at this time, we'll recognize Dee Behujian. Uh, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good evening, uh Dee Behujian, I'm a co-chair of the LACCPAG. Uh, I first wanted to commend Zoe. She did a great job, and she's braver than most adults. Uh, I just had a one question. I I heard you say that when students get home, they have to log in for an hour. Is that so you said earlier?
Okay, um, Mr. Zalinski, could you answer that? That's on the high school level. Could you answer that question?
So, you know, in our efforts to bring back um uh our students to a five-day uh instructional work week, we didn't want to lose any instructional time at the high school and the middle school. So the way that we're gonna make that up is that um because our students are on semester block and they attend four classes a day. Um, four days a week, they'll log back in. Uh, I believe the high school has picked uh noon will be their time, and I think the middle school is either twelve fifteen or twelve thirty. They'll log back in for about an hour uh to continue their instruction in that period. So for example, block one will log back in for block one on Mondays. Block two would be Tuesday's block, three will be Wednesday's block, four will be Thursdays and block uh Fridays will be um instructional support uh for all of our students. Uh, and that's the effort there is that we didn't want to lose any instructional time, which is already at a premium um when you're talking about on on both ends of the spectrum, and certainly for all of our students, whether they are uh difficult learners or they are advanced learners. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the instructional time was not hurt by any new model when we go to the four-hour day. Um, it will be a required login. Um, the teachers will uh certainly, as they always do, it'll be synchronous, and they will make it um valuable.
Mr. Zalinski, I have a question. Wouldn't that be starting March twenty-second?
Well, that is right. That that is correct. That will not shift will not happen until March twenty-second, correct? So the students will come back on March eighth, five days a week if they choose to, if they don't want to remain all hybrid. Uh, and then we will shift to that four-hour day and that extra meeting time on the twenty-second. Yes, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dee.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Kirsten Nackman. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am speaking to you tonight not only as a parent, but a taxpayer, a long-term resident, and also an employee of the district. I've been working in the district for the past twenty-four years, and I've never felt so uneasy about going to work, especially with the five-day model right on the on the horizon. I want nothing more than to go back to regular, normal days with my students in my classroom diving into lessons. However, I think people need to think about and realize that school today is not the same as it was a year ago, pre-pandemic. Parents need to talk to their children to see what it's really like to be in school with the safety guidelines that are now in place. We all need to realize your kids will be going back to school the way it is now, not the way it was. You'll be wearing masks for an extended period of time. There's not a lot of movement. There's no lunches or recess with your friends or socializing. I just want you to all consider to um reopen when and only when it is safe to do so for everybody, even though it might be a harder decision. Thank you for all your time and for everything that you do, and thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mrs. Nackman.
Okay, at this time, I do not see anybody else with a hand raised, so if you would like to get a public comment in, make sure to uh use that raise your hand button on the bottom. We'll give you a couple of seconds here. And we will recognize Kelly M. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Kelly M. Alano, four sixty, um Forked River. Um, I am a co-chair for this the LACCPAG as well. Um, I just wanted to commend all the teachers for the fabulous jobs that they are doing. I don't think that they hear it enough, but they really are doing a great job. Um, you also have to take into consideration the amount of time that they are spending making videos for their remote learners. They really are spending so much time, they're working harder than ever, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone acknowledges that fact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kelly.
Okay, Mrs. McAvoy, at this time, I do not see any other raised hands.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Dee George. We had some questions come in on the Google Forms.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Yes, we have three um members who emailed or used the Google platform to uh raise questions. The first would be Elaine Martin, who is uh twelve zero five, Maui Drive in Forked River. So if it's okay, I'll I'll read through the questions, and after each question, we can determine whether or not we've answered it in some other uh format. If not, then we can uh Mrs. McAvoy can direct that to the person who
Do you want to read all the questions at once, Mr. DeGeorge?
Um, how about I start reading them and and
Okay.
Your Dr. Clark would uh which I think after each one just indicate whether we've addressed that or not. Okay, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Number one, Ocean County is currently in the red zone with regards to COVID nineteen cases. What data is driving the school board's decision to open the schools five days a week in March? Our transmission rates are so high.
Okay, I think we answered that in the presentation.
Right, I think Dr. Clark said that we were in the orange zone, so that is true. Uh, number two, can you describe the five-day full remote program in detail?
Okay, yes, that was answered.
Number three, according to the survey that was sent, it seems the six-foot social distancing guidelines aren't feasible with all students present. How is it these guidelines no longer need to be adhered to?
Okay, Dr. Clark, can you just reiterate that, please?
Sure. Um, so as I, and again, I just want to remind our community that I'm gonna be posting the presentation on our website. Um, I talked about earlier um the fact that we are going to continue to follow the guidance provided by the New Jersey Department of Health um and the roadback uh guidance that the Department of Education provided to us. And yes, um, we are going to social distance to the maximum extent possible, um but there are going to be instances where that's not always going to happen. Does that mean that we're gonna be seating students right next to each other? Absolutely not. Um, but we are going to be using the physical distancing, uh I'm sorry, the physical barriers um and the masks to ensure um that we're mitigating um the spread of COVID.
And and Dr. Clark, just to add uh also to rearrange as possible some desks to be in a certain direction so that no students are facing one another, uh that they're all facing one direction uh in addition to the desk barriers that will be in place.
That's correct. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Decker. I forgot to mention that.
Good, George.
Next question, as parents, will we have to sign a waiver acknowledging our children will not be socially distanced from their classmates in order for them to attend five days a week?
Dr. Clark?
The answer is no.
Next question, with the presence of barriers on the desks, how will they prohibit students from seeing what the teacher is presenting in the front of the classroom? I understand they are clear, but with large class sizes, students seated up front will be the only ones with an unobstructed view.
Dr. Clark?
Yep. Um, so um I showed a photo earlier of what they look like. We've been using the barriers for quite some time. They are clear on all three sides. Um, and while they have presented some challenges in terms of them falling off uh desks, our principals and supervisors have been and teachers have been uh very creative in using different things to keep them on the desks. Um, and they've been working and um obstructed views has not been uh an issue that we've heard about. Um, but we'll continue to monitor that as well.
Thank you.
All right, next question, is it possible to still offer the cohort model of instruction as an option?
Dr. Clark?
Uh, so as I mentioned, we will discontinue the AB cohort model in favor of the five-day-a-week um model of instruction. Um, but again, and Mr. Zalinski touched upon this, and it's definitely worth repeating. Um, our students are going to remain in cohorts, so it's or or, you know, with with specials and traveling in the hallways. Um, when the weather starts to get nicer, when students are traveling outside, they are going to remain uh in their cohorts.
Uh, next question, does the board think it's reasonable for children to learn effectively without having lunch and a masked break?
Okay, so the board will each have public comments, and I cannot answer on behalf of the board.
Uh, then the final question, how will the quality of education remain the same in a class of twenty-four students as opposed to twelve on a half-day schedule?
Dr. Clark, I know you touched on that. Can you just
Yeah, I'll 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 reiterate uh real quick what I said, and and that is uh very simply that, you know, we've gotten to this point in the school year where uh, yes, we've been in a hybrid, but our students need more uh instruction, and more importantly, they need to be in front of their teachers. They need to begin seeing their classmates um for the sake of social emotional learning, um mental health services. Um, the list goes on and on, and we believe that um with with implementing the mitigating factors that we described, that we can safely do this.
Thank you.
All right, that is all uh from Elaine Martin, who thanks us for our time. Uh, the next person who sent in questions was Daniel Boyce um on behalf of Lenoka Harbor Elementary School Parents. Uh, fifteen questions.
Okay.
Number one, with the state of New Jersey being in the orange level, what is the urgency opening next month? Would it not make sense and be beneficial to wait until two weeks after spring break?
Okay, I think Dr. Clark uh mentioned that in her presentation.
Number two, with teachers not being added to the green light list for vaccinations, how does the district justify putting them in a situation where there is more exposure?
Okay, um and just so everyone knows, we will be passing the resolution tonight to urge the governor to put the staff members into the urgent vaccine um list to get there soon. Dr. Clark, can you touch on that, please?
Yeah, um, and you know, simply, you know, our our teachers are still going to be expected to maintain their social distancing in their classrooms um in the hallways. You know, again, we're not just throwing caution to the wind. Um, you know, and I forget who made the comment tonight, but um the comment was that you know, teachers are going to have to get closer to the students um to teach, and I I'm going to disagree. That doesn't need to happen. Should it happen? Absolutely. Do we want it to happen? Absolutely. But for the sake of making this plan work, um, we all are going to have to maintain uh our distance.
Thank you.
Number three, more exposure to teachers means more are likely to be in contact with the virus and the need to quarantine. Special area teachers are already being pulled to cover for the lack of substitute teachers. How will changing to a five-day-a-week schedule not worsen this situation? How is this not taking away from the students' education?
Mr. Zalinski, um can you touch on that because that's your area of expertise?
Well, I don't know if it's my area of expertise, uh but um you know, we we certainly have that challenge now. Uh, the way that we've merely mitigated the challenge is is actually through the use of technology. So teachers who are or who are ordered to quarantine either by the Department of Health or through our own contact tracing, uh we've uh pursued an aggressive policy where they can teach from home. The special area teachers are impacted. Sometimes they have to cover those classes because and it's one of the rare professions where a body has to be in the room uh at all times to monitor our students, make sure that they are safe. Uh, one of our strategies has been to do that, so that the specials have uh been impacted a little bit worse. Um, but the instruction uh uh has been limited, the impact of the instruction has been limited uh through the use of technology. Um, you know, in most cases, the elementaries don't always do that because they don't do synchronous instruction. So uh they do it a little bit differently. Um, and we make sure that uh in the lower elementaries where it's not synchronous uh that the instruction deals does still take place even if the teacher is forced to uh quarantine at home. Um, as as a side note, uh if we do move into the yellow, uh the quarantines uh times are actually shortened. Uh, so you know, that's another uh hope of ours uh over time, uh you know, getting us to uh June fifteenth. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zalinski.
Ms. McAvoy, just to add as well, this is this is a point that you know, we are going to continue to monitor when Dr. Clark spoke about as we uh enter this phase, we're gonna continue continue to monitor all of the aspects uh that are here to be able to make a decision to transition between uh this model and other remote models. So it's it's uh it's something that we always keep our eye on.
Right. Thanks, Mr. Decker, Mr. Zalinski.
Right, number four, is the district prepared if teachers take family leave if you move to open to five days too soon?
Dr. Clark?
Yeah, so family leave is is very, very specific, um and is generally um you know, not something that we're we're using for COVID situations. Um, and again, family leave uh and how it applies to the FFCRA and FMLA, it's a very complex and complicated uh calculation um that would require way more time than we can uh provide here. But if there are specific questions, um Dina Scala in our HR department is amazing at answering questions uh related to that.
Thank you.
All right, number five, not a week goes by without multiple COVID nineteen notifications from the district. What is the sense of exposing more staff and students until more people can become vaccinated?
Okay, I think that was part of the presentation already.
Number six, what are the plans for the busing situation? How are you planning to socially distance a full bus? Also, is there not a shortage of bus drivers and substitutes?
Okay, the first part of the question was answered. Mr. DeGeorge, could you answer the transportation question, please?
Sure. Uh, although, yes, there is uh an issue with getting good substitutes since the law changed in the last few years for all districts. In our district, we are not uh short drivers. We have a a great plan. Uh, we have a good list of substitutes, so at this point, uh we do not have those concerns.
Thank you.
Seven, is it true that there will be no social distancing with the five-day-a-week reopening plan?
Okay, that was part of the presentation.
Great. Uh, number eight, will temperatures still be taken before students enter the bus and buildings?
Uh, Mr. Zalinski, please.
So we are going to stop taking the temperatures on the bus. So we are going to stop taking the temperatures on the bus because as the buses get, we've worked very hard with transportation, and Mr. DeGeorge has been part of that. You know, we want to, we have to get the kids into school, our students into the school. We have yet to determine what our procedure is going to be at the door. It is one of our hanging questions in the next two weeks. What, we are either going to take temperatures at the doors of our buildings or we are going to transition to an attestation form where parents and in the older students' cases will attest to the fact, and it's usually three or four questions. They're not sick, they haven't been around anybody sick, and they don't have any COVID-like symptoms. So it is the one piece of the puzzle that we are going to solve within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Nine, are all of the principals in agreement with this decision? If no, wouldn't you agree that they have a better understanding of the conditions in the schools? When was the last time the superintendent visited the schools?
I cannot answer that. Dr. Clark, do you have an answer?
Sure. Our district leadership team, and I mentioned this just prior to my starting the presentation, has been working lockstep on developing this plan. We've been meeting very regularly, and it is this collaboration that has gotten us to this successful point in our school year. And it's that collaboration that will continue for the remainder of the school year. And I try to get into as many schools as often as possible as time permits.
Thank you.
Then, the New Jersey Department of Health recommends a broad community commitment to reduce the risk of exposure. Such commitments involve social distancing, wearing masks, cleaning and disinfection, and meticulous hygiene practices. With an average of 20 students in an elementary school classroom, how is it possible to keep the children socially distant? Is the district prepared to take on the responsibility of an increase in cases? And if a student and/or teacher gets seriously ill, also is the district providing more cleaning supplies and custodial help?
Okay, the first part of that was in the presentation. Mr. DeGeorge, can you answer the question?
About the custodians? Is that what you're asking me, Mrs. McAvoy?
The, the part about the cleaning supplies, do we have enough?
Yep, absolutely. At this point, we have as much as we need. We have the custodial help that we need at this time. We are trying our best. The plan that was put in place and outlined tonight does not actually increase the work of custodians because the students are not going to have at the common areas such as lunchrooms. So with the plan, the way it was described tonight, I confident that we will be just fine.
Thank you.
Number 11, has the Board of Education taken into consideration the health and morale of the teachers as well as their families?
The answer is yes to that. Thank you.
12, with the high school recently being shut down, do you still feel this is the best decision at this time? If older students with smaller class sizes are having a hard time controlling their exposure, what is your expectation with younger children in a much more populated setting?
Okay, that was all part of the reentry presentation?
Number 13, the survey recently sent home about changing to a five-day-a-week schedule is biased and inaccurate without offering the option to continue with the hybrid schedule. How is it possible to know what parents are comfortable with without this option?
Okay, and Dr. Clark did mention that a new survey will be going home shortly for each parent to respond to.
Number 14, Barnegat and Manahawken School Districts have decided to go back to the five-day-a-week schedule. However, nurses are getting daily notices from both districts looking for substitute nurses because of possible exposure. Is the district prepared for a school nurse shortage or have substitutes available?
Dr. Clark?
Sure. So, yeah, we, we hired two additional nurses to assist with the load that we anticipated back in September. We have heard from the Department of Education and the county office that we possibly could be receiving additional cares money. And we're going to look to see if the expenditure of those funds could be used on staffing. And if we find the need to hire an additional nurse or additional substitute nurses, then we will do so accordingly.
Thank you.
Number 15, is the board and superintendent taking the teachers, staff and principals' concerns seriously? Since they are in the schools on a daily basis, wouldn't they be your best source of information and reference on what the next steps of reopening our schools should be?
Dr. Clark?
And the answer to that is yes. And as I mentioned earlier, our principals and the rest of our administrative team have been part of planning for this implementation every step of the way, as has the board. And I don't know if you want to add to that, Mrs. McAvoy, in terms of the board's knowledge or communication?
Right, and I agree with what Dr. Clark said. The board is knowledgeable about what is happening.
All right, and then, Mrs. McAvoy, there is one other person, Brent DeAngelis, 915 Clearmore Avenue in La Nocca Harbor. General question, when will the schools start allowing recreational basketball to use the gyms? Kids are missing another season of sports. I know that Dr. Clark already answered that question very well.
Yes, and thank you. And thank you for the three people who submitted questions. If you still have other questions, please reach out to your building principal or reach out to Dr. Clark or Mr. Zalinski or Mrs. Amos if you, you know, if you want more questions answered. Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, and we're going to transition into committee reports. This month, we have Mrs. DeSenza reading the policy report.
Yes, we had a policy meeting on Tuesday. It was February 9th, Mr. Peters, myself, and Mrs. Claus. We have some policies being abolished tonight, and they are on the agenda. Those abolished policies are going to be combined into a new policy, which we are discussing. It's 41 pages long, so we're taking an additional month to review that. And we also have a rewrite on board committees 0155, and that's policy.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSenza. Mrs. Downing, curriculum report, please.
There you go. Hi, good evening, everyone. We had a meeting on February 8th. Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Plino, Dr. Clark, Mr. Decker, and we had the supervisor of guidance from the high school, Mary Ash, join us. And we talked, we had quite a long meeting. One of the discussions, Mr. Decker presented along with supervisor of guidance, Mary Ash. They reviewed the current practices in our guidance department, and they addressed some of the protocols that they are going to put in place to improve the services of our guidance department. It's going to be over a period of time, and as it goes along, we will be, you know, giving information at next meeting and future meetings. We also discussed Big Brothers, Big Sisters. The program is off to a great start, and they are meeting the high school with Mill Pond on Google meets, so it's going very well. We also discussed strategic planning. And Dr. Clark informed the committee that the action plan teams are meeting and developing the learner success, finance and facilities, and community outreach and engagement action plans. Mr. Decker also presented an update on the status of our autism program. And currently, the program is focusing on areas of applied behavioral analysis instructional models, working with consultant Beth Glassberg. The department has implemented and refined multiple data collection and analysis protocols. We also discussed as far as technology, the Chromebooks that are coming. They're here in the United States, and we don't have an actual date yet when they're coming to the front door of Lacy Schools, but it should be very soon. Dr. Clark already mentioned the newsletters, so if you have a chance, please look on the webpages to see the newsletters. And we talked about the reopening plan, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that comprehensive report, Mrs. Downing. And finally, we have Mr. Scanlon with the finance report.
And facilities, correct?
Yeah, all in one.
All right. Starting with facilities, we met, oh, first of all, we met on February 11th, and the thing of interest on the agenda tonight is the approval of a bill for $6,043.75, which is the inverter filters for the solar panels. The, they're a typical expense that would be part of the regular maintenance, regular being maybe once every five or six years. And of course, when you consider the $6,000 spent this month, comes out of the $16,488 that the S-Rex sold for about a week before that. We're still doing very well with that project. When it comes to finance, we discussed the budget. All budget projections still show that we're about to lose $1.6 million in state aid. That doesn't have this, have any hope or doesn't appear to be any relief on the horizon. But we are working on a budget and trying to figure out exactly what we're going to need to do to make it work. The allowable 2% tax increase plus $300,000 in bank cap would allow us to increase of 1.3 million to offset a loss of 1.6 million. So as you can see, it's going to be a tough year for budgets. And that basically brings us up to where we are. More budget information will be given as it gets more, when there's more solid information to give. We are working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon, could you just please talk about the February 25th public meeting?
Oh, yes, the, that's the board retreat.
Yes.
Board retreat, we are going to have a public meeting where we will be, the entire board will discuss the budget and where we're going with it at that point. And at that time, we'll be open to the public for comment and question.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And at this, this time, we're going to transition to board member comments. Mrs. DeSenza, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to congratulate the senior students of the month, Mike McMaren and Kimberly Martinez Alvarez, and our unsung hero Grace Giadano. We hope to see you in person in the near future. Congratulations to staff members of the month, Patricia Barley and Allison McCann. Great job. The Parent University Virtual Meeting on February 4th was a very informative presentation, and I hope that the parents will continue to join those sessions. The OCC College Academy Night on February 10th was well-attended. The meeting was virtual, of course. This is by far one of the most incredible and intense programs offered by Lacy High School in OCC. I hope a lot of students decide to take advantage of this program. It truly is a jumpstart for life. This has been an incredibly challenging school year with the pandemic. Everyone needs to pull together for the students. They are going to need a lot of help to catch up since the situation at hand has kept them out of their classrooms and away from their teachers for almost a year, far too long. I fully support the administration and all their efforts to return the students to the classroom five days a week. And it's never too soon to contemplate becoming a school board candidate for 2021. I implore parents and students to please consider this worthy endeavor. Anyone over the age of 18 can become a candidate as long as they are a registered voter, live in town at least one year. There are two seats expiring this coming November, something to think about. Candidate packets can be obtained from the Ocean County Clerk's Office, and there's a lot of time to think about it. The petitions aren't due until the 4th Monday in July, the 26th. Emails, please send emails to all seven board members and administration at the same time. That way, parents can be sure that all board members are on the same page with issues at the same time. And also, board members are not allowed to answer individual parent concerns. It's our job to bring these concerns to the superintendent's attention. The board does not run the day-to-day operations of the district. We provide oversight. This is a very common misconception about board members. We cannot act alone, and we are only board members in a legally constituted setting, which is an advertised board meeting like now. Our next meeting will be next Thursday night, February 25th. It'll be our retreat. And then the next business meeting will be Thursday night, March 18th. And thank you all for attending this meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSenza. And I just want to comment, if someone in the public does email the Board of Ed, I will write back to them and acknowledge that we did edit and turn it over to the superintendent. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, Mrs. Claus, would you go next, please?
Sure. Did you want me to do the spotlight or hold on till next time?
You make the choice.
Oh, up to you. I'll just do my public comment, and then I'll have something for next time. It's fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
It's been a long night.
Yes, yes, okay.
I just wanted to address the reopening plan. I do understand the concern some of you have for both keeping your kids home as well as sending them back to school. I hear our, I hear our community members, the praises are endless for the teachers and how they're trying to do their best to reach and engage the students while teaching virtual. I hear from the parents that their children are falling behind, have lost the motivation, and waking up late to log into class. I also hear from parents of our student athletes who will do anything to give them a normal season. And some will choose to keep their children home, the majority, over 75% that were surveyed in, for the past survey, would like to send their children back five days a week. As a board member, it's my obligation, within reason, to represent our community as a whole, and the whole would like to return. We do know in-person learning increases material retention while decreasing emotional and mental long-term effects. I'm very confident in our administration. We'll keep very close eye on the cases within the district, if any, and we'll adjust the schedule if needed. Our administration will always keep our students and faculty's health, safety, and best interests in mind as we move forward. Let's continue to work together and have an open line of communication so we can make this work for Lacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Mrs. Downing, would you like to go next?
Yep. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Michael and Kimberly for students of the month, two outstanding students with so much to offer. So congratulations to both of you, and congratulations to Patty Barley and Mrs. McCann for their work as powers and teachers, and you're doing such a great job. Thank you. And regarding the reopening plan, I know many of you are hoping for and are encouraging the schools to reopen for five days a week, and others are saying, no, don't do it. I am supporting the return of our students for a number of reasons. But most importantly, our children need to get back into school for academic reasons, and even more importantly, for their emotional and mental health. Everything we have read, have, everything we read supports the fact that today's students need normalcy in their lives. Children need to be with their peers. I know some are not happy, and I get it. However, students are looking forward to being back to school, getting back to a normal day, whatever that means nowadays. But those who are uneasy will continue to do remote. I have faith in the administration ensuring the safety of our children and our staff. And let's face it, there may be steps backwards, but the administration will deal with them, and if we have to close because of it, we will. But in the meantime, I think it's time to get back, time to get our students back into those classrooms. And I think they're going to be much happier students, and I'm hoping that this plan is successful, and I think it will be. Thank you for all of our staff, not just the teachers and administrators, but our entire staff, for everything you've done for our kids in our schools, from the cleanliness to the academic rigor. Everybody that's involved, cafeteria, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts because we know it's hard. We know it's hard for you to leave your families to go work in the schools, and we do appreciate it. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Mr. Scanlon, would you go next, please?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Downing. I'd like to Like to congratulate the seniors of the month, Michael McMurray and Kimberly Martinez and the unsung hero Grace Giordano. Congratulations and wish you well in the future. It was very interesting listening to all the comments tonight. One of them struck me was a comment that was made that said that Lacy was seventh in the number of COVID cases. And a little side note on that is that in the top ten populations in Ocean County, Lacy's number seven. And in the top ten in the top ten high school or school populations, Lacy's number seven. So being number seven in the number of COVID cases is kind of where you would expect to be. All right, it, it just, it falls into place. And it doesn't make it an easier decision or a hard decision, a harder decision. It just makes it a decision. We have to decide whether we want to move on or not. And it, for the sake of the students, I think as a retired teacher, being in school is much, much better than not being there. And everything we can do, we should do. The only thing I didn't agree with, and I will, just, just everybody doesn't think we just walk around in lockstep. I didn't agree with the plan as it is. I thought that we would be better off opening on March first to the elementary schools because I felt that they didn't move around as much. They didn't interact in hallways. They tend to stay in their classrooms and were self-contained. And therefore, they have less interactive contact. This is opposed to the high school and middle schools where they may be changing classes during the day. And having been a middle school teacher, I know that they're very active. Also, it was concerned that the high school, middle school students sometimes are caretakers for the younger children. Those were my opinions. That being said, that was not, that was not the opinion that became the majority opinion. So we all go along with opening the schools and following the plan as it is. And I only say all that just to let people know that we don't just sit there and all go, oh, yes, 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 to the first thing we hear. We discuss it, we talk about it, we argue about it. And then when we come to the end, we agree on the final decision. Thank you, Dr. Clark, for leading us to a final decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Plino, are you here?
I am, and I apologize. I don't know why my video is not working during the second half of this meeting. It did in the beginning, but I don't know what's going on. But anyway, good evening all. So I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. In relation to all our award recipients this month, staff and students. I want to thank our administration for working very diligently hard on this return plan. And our staff, you know, it doesn't go on deaf ears. We know that you're concerned. Parents, some parents, we get that you're concerned. But like Mr. Scanlon said, we have to, we have to choose a point at some time we have to move forward. And this is, this is the point. Our students are much better off being in a classroom than not. And again, emotionally, they need to be with their peers. So like Mr. Scanlon said, you know, we don't just say yes on everything. We discuss this, this, this plan has been presented to us individually in committees. We go back and forth with our concerns. And I think my concerns were satisfied by the, by the administration and their plan. So it seems collectively as a board, we are behind our administration with this moving forward. So, so I'm very pleased to say that, yes, I am all for moving forward with, with this plan. Again, we're following the, the road back plan. It's not something that just was, you know, dreamt up overnight. It wasn't done hastily. It's been ongoing since, since we went out last year. And our goal was always to get back. So, and like Mrs. Downing said, you know, there's going to be roadblocks. We're going to stumble a little bit. We'll take a step back, but we're going to move forward. And if we need to, we need to change our direction, we change our direction. But now's the time. Things are going to be getting down, you know, like the groundhog said, February second, we have six weeks of winter. So we're going to be coming back after the groundhog said that spring's coming. So hopefully, you know, the numbers will be going in a direction that they're going. That's it. Everybody stay well and thank you for the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. For my comments, I just want to thank Dr. Clark and the staff members who were part of the first parent university. We had over a hundred people there and it was really well done and very informative. And I want to let everyone know that the new social, emotional, and mental health committee that the district is having the first meeting will be in a few weeks. And we can report back to let you know how that's going. When we met with the committee members for the town for the lead program, Law Enforcement Against Drugs, we asked the town council if they would, in good faith, share the sixteen thousand dollar fee with us. So we are willing to put eight thousand dollars out and we're asking the town council to put the other eight thousand out. So every seventh grader will have a chance to be a part of the lead program. And what everybody else is saying about the reentry plan. First of all, I thank the board members for letting the community know how each of you feel individually. So, and the community knows, the staff knows. And it's not easy being on the Board of Education when we have staff members letting us know that it's going to be tough for them to go back. We understand all your concerns. And the decision wasn't made lightly, like everyone else said. We've met daily, we've talked daily. And just as everybody else said, we are supporting the administration. We're putting our faith into them that this will work. And if someone does get COVID, we will do what we have to do to keep everybody safe. And we do appreciate it. It might just sound like empty words, but we do appreciate all staff members here in the district who are working hard for the children. And that's what we're all here for. We're all here for the children and what we think is best for them. With that being said, we're going to conclude the board comments and we're going to get into board business. So we're going to start with resolutions. The first one will be meeting minutes. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
You're muted, Kim.
I'm muted, Kim. I'm sorry, yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
I have to abstain from the, hold on now.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next is item two listed bills for February twenty-twenty-one. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Can someone second it, please?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, because I was unable to review the bills on because of the holiday on Monday and snow on Thursday. I'm going to be abstaining on the bills.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yeah.
Mr. Oh, Mr. Scanlon abstained. Mrs. DeSens.
Yes, and I have nine nay votes, nine five one five four three, nine five one one three three, nine five zero one six six, nine five oh eight zero six, nine five three nine three nine, nine five four four six one, nine five three nine seven four, nine five three eight two eight, and nine five four four seven two. And I will send you the list.
Thank you. I don't write that fast. Mrs. Downing?
I'll vote yes, and I'm abstaining on bill number nine five one six nine nine.
Thank you. Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. The next resolution will be finance items three through eight. Budget transfers to sales solar credits, budget calendar cooperative purchase, cooperative purchase of replacement of solar panels, and the sale or disposal of the assets. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I had a question about number seven, the cooperative purchase. Was, was that brought up earlier about the change in amount and account or something on that one?
Yes, it was. Yes, during the first portion of our meeting, we said that the quote was revised from fifteen thousand dollars to what you see, six thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens.
Yes, and I'm really glad to see those inverter filters being replaced.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next will be items nine and ten, added district placement to different students. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, for number nine, abstain on number ten.
Thank you. Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next will be item number eleven. And I'm going to read the resolution now. Therefore, be it resolved, the Lacy Township Board of Education finds a substantial public purpose exists to request that Governor Murphy give appropriate priority in the statewide administration of the COVID-nineteen vaccine to all public school district personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Absolutely, yes.
Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, definitely. And next, items number twelve and thirteen, policy, the first read and the second read on the policies. Can we have a motion?
Motion.
I can.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next will be B donations. And on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we'd like to thank everyone who donated to the district. Can we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, with thanks.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next is C programs and curriculum. Can we have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next is D professional days and workshops. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
And that's the second also. Can we, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next is certificated personnel, items one to fourteen. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a comment, Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
At your request and as a courtesy to you, absent objection from any other board member, we are tabling item E twelve until the March board meeting.
Yes, we'll bring that back up in March with a dollar amount on it. Thank you.
Number twelve?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge.
Well, to be clear, this is a roll call vote for one through fourteen minus twelve, okay?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move it. Or did we already do that?
We did. Can we have a roll call, please? Thank you, Mrs. Downing.
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next is non-certificated personnel, items one to seven. Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Ziegoff on her retirement. Hope she enjoys.
Likewise, we're going to miss her.
I think we should vote, I think we should vote no. So I can't retire.
Well, we do have her for almost another year, so that's good. That's great. Can we have a motion, please?
We did that already now.
Oh, a roll call, please.
That'd be awesome. Mrs. Claus?
Yeah.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSens?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Plino?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, thank you. And are there any walk-on resolutions, Mr. DeGeorge?
There are not. That is the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to close the meeting, please?
Motion, please.
Roll call? Now, all in favor of adjourned meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Stay safe. Everyone, stay safe.